Okay, Mayor, we're good to go.
Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of 2022 meeting dates was published in the Eastern Express Times and the Hundredan Democrat on February 17, 2022, and posted on the bullet board at Borough Hall. Action may now be taken. Please throw me the question.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Barry.
Here.
Graham.
Here.
Hughes.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
So that's three.
Here.
Motion to dispense with the reading of the October 13, 2022, regular minutes.
Second.
Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
So that's three.
Yes.
Strange.
Yes.
And Barry.
Yes.
Motion to approve the October 13, 2022, regular minutes. Public comments. It is the policy of the Borough Council that all public comments on an issue shall be limited to three minutes per person. Comments may be made on any subject pertaining to Borough issues. Comments pertaining to the public hearings should be saved for that section of the agenda. Each person may speak once during a public comment section. No debating between residents. Comments should be addressed to Mayor and Council at the public microphone.
Hello. Doug Walker, Sylvan Road. I just had a question on the Chapter 48, the retiree benefits. We still haven't been given the information, and it's been voted in, it's passed by resolution, and yet we still haven't seen the documents from Phoenix Advisors or anything. So that's a public record now. It's no longer deliberative because you guys voted on it and put it into practice. So when is that information going to be released, then? Can we get it on the website? Can we share it with the residents?
Mayor, if you'd like me to address because there is a legal issue. Actually, documents that are used in the deliberative process, choices, alternate, alternate ways to handle something, don't become public documents when an issue is passed. The law, I believe, is clear. We actually, there's a case that somebody had requested those documents and when they were denied because it's part of the deliberative process. That's an exception. The deliberative process documents are an exception under Oprah to production. And so the person who requested, I think it was the Phoenix Report, and it was denied under the deliberative process exception, took an appeal to the GRC.
And we're still waiting for that.
So that's still, right. So that's the document talking about.
Right.
And so when the GRC decides that case, hey, if we're incorrect, that'll be produced, certainly. And I'm just talking about the law, the legal aspect of it.
Right. But when the response was filed, and when the request to the GRC was sent in, you guys hadn't voted on it yet. It was still in deliberation. So I could understand that. But now the, now the council has taken action, not deliberating anymore. You use that report to make a decision. So it should be released. The GRC isn't going to hear that. Has anybody from the Borough notified the GRC that the Borough took action to pass that or rejected?
I would have to go back and double check, Doug. I think that the request that was appealed was after the vote was taken.
It was before. It was before.
Was the request?
Before the vote was taken.
I'd have to go back and check that, but it doesn't matter.
And I agree that at that time it was deliberative.
It doesn't matter. And I believe the cases were cited to you as to the fact that deliberative process documents, you know, are not subject to Oprah. And look, we may be wrong. The GRC will, you know, decide whether or not we're wrong. But the long and the short of it is that the cases say even after a vote is taken, those documents are not public documents subject to Oprah. That's the law.
Okay. Has anybody notified the GRC that action was taken?
I'll go back and double check. You know, certainly I haven't sent anything to the GRC since the vote was taken. But I think the papers that got filed with the GRC indicated that the vote was taken. Yes.
Yeah. It was under, I have it here.
Do you have papers we filed?
Yeah.
You want to let me see it?
So.
It's been, it's been like a year since.
Yeah. It said it was deliberated.
So that's, that's.
Yeah, this was filed more than a year ago. He didn't take the vote over a year ago. So that answers the questions.
Would you let me see it?
And I understand.
Would you let me see it?
And I understand that it says it's deliberated.
Okay, your two minutes are up. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Good evening. Dennis Bure from 24 Chestnut Court. I was reading in the Hundredan Review this week about Exxon selling their property, and they're going to build a warehouse in Lebanon. And all these people writing into the neighborhood site, you know, know anything about it. And it brings to mind what happens in Hybridge all the years. I've been to like 50 to 75 meetings over the years. And I got the notice, you know, the message from the mayor, and it talks about a natural recycling facility on Dewey Avenue. Now, again, I go to meetings, I read the newspapers, I look at minutes. I live like an eighth of a mile from a recycling center that's going to be constructed in my area. I'm not saying it's good, bad, or different. And I'm not one of the people, I mean, people across the street, they live in $400,000 homes, they look at the woods, now they're going to look at recycling centers. So I'm not hurt that much. But I mean, people should at least be aware of the fact that there's a, if I asked 50 of my neighbors, 48 of them wouldn't know that there's a recycling center that's being built. So one of the problems I have, and this is, as I said, it's indicative not just of Hybridge, of other towns. There's no transparency. You never know what's going on. Give you another example. You sent your card out, and you talked about a lawsuit finally being settled between Hybridge and Clinton. Six years, blah, blah, this, that. Why don't you publish the results in the newspaper? Is there some legal restriction? This is going on for six years and say, blah, blah, this is what happened, and this is how it was resolved. Did it work out favorably for Hybridge? You know, what was the original problem? You know, they go, you go to these meetings, like I came here a couple of weeks ago for a meeting, and everybody went into private session. You function in darkness as a, as a resident of a small town. Everything is, is covered up. I say covered up. It's never shared with the people. I'll give you another example I wrote down. I found out somehow or another that there was going to be potentially $800,000 spent for a wedding hall in Hybridge. What the heck's that all about? I hadn't heard about. Somebody happened to mention to me. I went to the meeting, and then I heard about it. And then I remember, I asked you, Mayor, I says, $800,000. What's the sales projection over the next three to five years? In other words, what kind of return are we getting for this investment in private? Well, we don't have those numbers. Spending $800,000, risking $800,000, and we don't have any kind of numbers? So again, all these things go on, and the people are never really informed. There's a newspaper, a local newspaper. You could send emails once a month. Hey, these are the big things. Just want to let you know. There's a recycling center being built. You can be wherever. You say, oh, okay, I've got some questions. So I think whether it's you or Doug, that's the new mayor, I think there has to be, the word today is transparency. People have to know what's going on. Doesn't hurt. I mean, you're people basically working as volunteers for the most part. So I think it's only fair and proper if, and we know that people don't have a tendency to get involved in their community. That's just the way it is. People work, and they don't come to meetings. I've come to meetings for years. You always have like eight or 10 people here. They're busy. So it has to be some form of communication where they know what significant things are going on. So that's, that's my, whether it's you or Doug, and maybe Hybridge can set the example for other towns, more transparency. That's what I got to say.
Thanks, Dennis.
I will address, at the very least, and that's before Michelle's time, the issue with the lawsuit, which went on for many years.
Six years, I think.
Was in multiple articles in the newspaper, in the Hundredan Review, and the Democrat.
Many meetings.
At least five articles that I read while I was serving, while it was going on.
I don't remember seeing.
And if you don't remember, it was when the town of Clinton stole a lot of our money over a number of years, and we were trying to get it back.
That's not true.
So.
Well, in the end.
How was it resolved, Steve?
It was resolved that in the end, we basically came to an agreement where they paid back some of our money, and then we had a new contract.
What can I know that?
So, but I'm just saying.
That three minutes was up.
It was out there, and many of these things are. But they're easy to miss.
You got another minute, second.
Yeah.
All right. Thanks.
Anything else?
Sally Ward from Solitude. I'm going to try to handle what I just heard. I'm just really offended that Doug Walker came up here and brought up the old, old, old news of Chapter 48 again, and in an argumentative manner, and was asking our attorney honest questions, and our attorney was honestly trying to answer, and he kept talking over him. That's just really offensive, Doug Walker's behavior. Sorry. I just want to say that to the council and anybody who's going to listen to this very transparent meeting, because since our mayor became mayor, she started letting these things be seen on video totally 100% as anytime anybody wants to. As far as the natural recycling center, there is not a recycling center. As from what I understand, it's going to be a place where the brush and things are going to be placed. If I'm wrong, correct me at some point. Lawsuit of Clinton, that was a mess, and thank you for bringing that up, Steve. And our mayor, Michelle Lee, was able to smooth over and patch over after all those years of that mess, and our attorney working really hard at it, and everybody else. She was able to go to the mayor of Clinton and speak, you know, as a human being, and sign an agreement, figured out how to do it in a, in a kind and cooperative manner as opposed to a lashing and crashing kind of manner, like we just heard, like I just heard from the two men who came up here, one of which brought up Doug Walker, which I think is really inappropriate at this point. It's not a political forum. The golf contract, that's just, it was so public and so transparent. I just can't believe that anybody wouldn't have any clue about that. If they ever made an effort to find out what's really going on here, they'd be here at every meeting. They'd read everything that's put out there on our website and, you know, not try to make a big deal right before an election that's saying something about our mayor not being transparent. That's just ridiculous, and it's offensive, and how dare they just say it? Sorry. Thanks.
Mayor, if I may.
It's called a natural recycling center.
Sorry. No debating in the audience. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, I just want to clarify because I did look up our response on the appeal to the GRC, and I don't know what document Doug has, but I'll be glad to share with him that the document that we filed with the GRC specified that the vote was taken, the minutes of that meeting where the vote was taken were provided, and the request for the Phoenix Report was then served the next day on Oprah, after the vote was taken. So I'll be glad to share that with Doug because he may have a document that's different than what we filed.
Thanks, Barry. Any other public comments? Okay. On to public hearings. Ordinance 2022-039, amend Chapter 180-17, permits and certificate of fire code status. Motion to open the public hearing. Move. Second. Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
So that's three.
Yes.
Strange.
Yes.
And Barry.
Yes.
Bonnie, this is just to be clarifying the rates that we would have for fire inspections at an event. We are not going to charge Borough-sponsored events the cost of that inspection.
Taxes up for Borough events.
Yeah, thank you.
You said it way better than me.
Any, any questions from council? Anyone? Motion to close the public hearing for ordinance 2022-039. Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
So that's three.
Yes.
Strange.
Yes.
And Barry.
Yes.
Motion to adopt ordinance 2022-039.
Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
So that's three.
Yes.
Strange.
Yes.
And Barry.
Yes.
Ordinance 2022-040, sewer pumps and equipment. Motion to open the public hearing.
Move. Second.
Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
So that's three.
Yes.
Strange.
Yes.
And Barry.
Yes.
Golf sewer pumps, correct?
Correct.
No, no, sorry, fine.
No, this is actually for the sewer pump house.
Oh, the pump house. Sorry, we have a lot of sewer pumps happening.
Finished Phase One, and now it's starting Phase Two.
Okay. Got it. Anybody from council? Comments?
How many pumps is this, actually? Are they replacement pumps? How many pumps is this? Is it one?
It's part of Phase Two. We don't have Phase Two designed fully yet. This will start the process.
Okay.
I guess bullet board isn't specific.
Motion to close the public hearing for ordinance 2022-040. Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
So that's three.
Yes.
Strange.
Yes.
And Barry.
Yes.
Motion to adopt ordinance 2022-040.
Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
So that's three.
Yes.
Strange.
Yes.
And Barry.
Yes.
Ordinance 2022-041, BACCO. Motion to open the public hearing. Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
So that's three.
Yes.
Strange.
Yes.
And Barry.
Yes.
This was, I think we talked about this BACCO at length. We had the money for it. We need a new one. Oh, Steve.
That's good, Mayor. So recently, DPW Director Metz returns some capital money back to budget, and he wants to buy a BACCO. Ours is beat up and old, and you could get great use of that.
Anybody from council? Any questions?
No.
Motion to close the public hearing, public hearing for ordinance 2022-041.
May. Second.
Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
So that's three.
Yes.
Strange.
Yes.
And Barry.
Yes.
Motion to adopt ordinance 2022-041. Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
So that's three.
Yes.
Strange.
Yes.
And Barry.
Yes.
Yeah, Britain Communications.
We have the monthly tax compliance reports and the Lake Solitude Dam formal report.
On, on to the consent agenda.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I need to clear up something on the dam. It's recently noted that we still have a high hazard potential dam. And I just wanted to clarify for anyone because it is confusing wording, that a high hazard potential dam, defined by the state as a dam that may result in probable loss of life and or extensive property damage. The Hoover Dam is a Class I high hazard dam. It's, the classification is the damage it could cause if there was a problem. If you read the report, we have the highest rating of safety in construction on our dam, which is satisfactory by the state. And of course, there are some minor maintenance problems or issues that DPW is aware of, and Brandon is putting a plan together to, to correct those. But our dam is safe. It's not a, it's not a problem. I just want to be clear with that. Thank you.
Okay, on to the consent agenda. Anyone want to take anything out?
I would like to take out 217.
I'd like to pull 220.
Okay. Motion to approve Resolution 216, 218, and 19, 221 through 225. Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
So that's three.
Yes.
Strange.
Yes.
And Barry.
Yes.
Do I go first?
I wanted it pulled because the Environmental Commission hasn't had a chance to discuss this at all. It's been something that, actually, Rick and I were talking about way back, and we had had one at one point, but it all of a sudden just appeared on here, and Bonnie apologized that she just got it on here before going through the proper channels of coming to EC first. And I have a bunch of questions that I just wanted to go through from previous times, what if, and what if kind of thing. So I'd just like to pull it till we've had a chance to redo it.
To add to that, one of the questions I had was that it seems that this contract is, all of the terms are, how do you put it, under New York state and city law, because that business is there.
From Brooklyn.
It seems like it should have something to do with New Jersey state law, since we're involved too.
That's one of many questions.
I don't know if there are any differences, but.
Because I'm just concerned about how safety and everything, because we don't know this company. I know Brandon's worked with them, but we don't know anything about.
And maybe it has to be New York, because that's the business. I don't know, but.
No, it doesn't have to be.
Just struck me as odd.
Yeah. Typically, a business is going to want to have a contract decided based upon the law where they are located. You know, I see lots of contracts, California, you know, Illinois law, even though the contract is being, you know, served in New Jersey. That is not required, but businesses prefer it because they know the law of their state, and every state's law is different.
We just need to know what kind of container. Is it locked? How do we make sure that only E stuff gets in there? Because if they put things that aren't collected right in the contract, it says we're responsible for getting rid of it. So I don't want this to cost me money.
Sorting it ourselves or something.
Exactly. So this is a whole bunch. So it's, I don't think we're ready to.
Bonnie, did you want to add anything?
No, my bad. I liked it. I saw it. I thought it was great, and I got over ambitious.
Lynn, I had a long conversation with Brandon about this today. If you'd like to get together and talk with him to fully understand.
Well, I would because he's new, and he doesn't know that, to work with Environmental Commission Two on these things.
Sure.
Do we have to vote to table?
Do we vote to table that right now?
Yes.
Okay. So can I get a motion to table Resolution 217? Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
So that's three.
Yes.
Strange.
Yes.
And Barry.
Yes.
Anything strange?
Okay, so there was a, I may have some questions about the Borough Hall access policy. Do we, is this an amendment to an existing policy? Do we have a resolution or ordinance that outlines Borough Hall access policy at the moment? I couldn't find one, but I thought maybe I missed it. Sometimes I can't find things in the code because it's a lot of stuff.
No, we don't.
So this is, this is new. I mean, I'm sure at some point there may, but this is basically brand new. Okay.
Well, we realized that we were kind of exposed.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it definitely is a good idea to develop one. I absolutely agree. But there were certainly, there were some things in here that seemed, maybe we should table it for a moment because there's a few things that could stand to be, I think, fixed, or at least, at least considered. The terms designated hours and a few other things are not clarified. It seems to give the Borough Administrator, the only person, the right to determine access, as opposed to mayor and council and administrator. It says in one of the sections that if there's an issue with a liaison not being able to be at a meeting, the meeting doesn't give the option of canceling it. It says it shall be rescheduled or held via electronic means, and does not provide another. When it says shall be, you have to do those two things, unless I'm mistaken, whereas maybe would be an option. It also says that access to Borough Hall for American Legion, it says they have access for their regularly scheduled meetings, but doesn't specify, well, how do they get in? Are they allowed to be there without a councilperson or the mayor? And council people and mayor, it says they can, you know, access the building front and back for carrying out duties on behalf of the Borough of Hybridge. It does not specify what those prescribed times are anywhere. And it also doesn't designate that they can use the meeting room for that. It seems that according to this, mayor and council members would not be allowed to meet with residents. So that if the mayor and a council member wanted to meet with someone, residents that had a concern, there doesn't seem to be a provision for doing that unless it's approved by council. And, you know, any kind of meeting, the coffee with the mayor would count on a Saturday outside of business hour. So just, it seems like there.
I think you're, I don't mean to interrupt, but I think the interpretation is a little off. Mayor and council and Borough employees obviously always have access.
Anytime.
Anytime.
Okay. And it doesn't specify that.
And it's just saying that a mayor and council and/or Borough employee during Borough hours, traditional hours, or if off hours, a member of the council, mayor, or Borough staff needs to be in attendance.
Well.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Barry, because Barry helped us write this.
Yeah, that was the intent.
I can see that that was the intent, but it specifies that only committees. It does not say that two council people could meet. And in fact, it specifies that they can access the front and back door, but does not suggest they can, it specifies access to the meeting room as a separate item. And so I just, it might be worth, put it on the table for a month and make sure that everything's correct before it goes, you know, because it becomes a thing. Since we've never had it before, there's no rush.
I leave it to the mayor and Bonnie, but, you know, I mean, some of the things it's saying in terms of, it specifies that council members have access to Borough Hall. And so once they have access, they can meet there and whatever. But, you know, you need clarification. I leave it to the mayor, whether she wants to move this tonight, or maybe give some time for more input. It doesn't matter to me.
I'm not saying we shouldn't have it. I think it's a good idea. I mean, it makes perfect sense, and it's kind of odd that we haven't had one. But rather than do it and then fix it, it just, it seems like there are some unclaritys, some, you know, things for clarification in here. That's all. Now, once again, if people vote and prefer it, then that's the way it falls out. I'm just expressing my thoughts on it. So that's why I pulled it. There should be nothing wrong with clarifying the language. Make it more clear that the council, the mayor, and everybody in the public as well. Anyway, that's all I had to say about it, so.
Anybody else? I think it's pretty clear. And yeah, we can try to interpret things a little bit more clear if we want to. Certainly, people can send their suggestions after this meeting, but I don't think we need to lawyer it up any further than we already have. So I'd like to move to vote on this Resolution 220. Can I get a motion?
May.
Second.
Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
So that's three.
No.
Strange.
No.
Barry.
Yes.
All right. On to council committee assignments and special assignments. Councilman Graham.
So the first is the finance report. There's a handful of items. One was the electronic sale was October 21. We talked about this, where people would work online, and all leans were sold with the premiums totaling $7,400. There was an added assessment bills that were mailed October 5 that was totaling $40,437. And budget requests per couple of years are due back from department heads by November 14. So stay on that. The golf committee report, we had an in-person meeting finally, which was great, on October 24. We met in person. There's a lot of good news. Rounds were up for September, revenue's up for September. And Hybridge completed all of their scheduled events that they had. There was an enormous And Hybridge completed all of their scheduled events that they had. There was an enormous list of events and we went through all of them. It was great. The last one was October 7th, I think. There was a other thing, one thing that I wasn't, didn't know was coming down the line, but it was this metric that was offered to us, which was an impressive metric. It was made available and at first it talked about how golf is in the Northeast is extremely popular, as if we didn't know this. But it's up two percent. It's still something that people enjoy, even within the confines of the weather. Actually, that day it was raining and they were talking about how people had somehow shoehorned in tee times. People want to play golf, so we're very happy that that's true, obviously, since we own a golf course. We have an approval rating of seventy percent at Hybridge Hills, sixty-three percent is the average. Last year we were at sixty-two, so that's up as well. And we have this app that I'm not sure people are aware of. If you're not people, why would you know? But it's something that people are really availing themselves of. It's fantastic. It's getting a lot of traffic. And they actually had a metric that tracked social media. And the social media is robust. It's Facebook and Instagram and it's impressive. Obviously, anything you can do to promote Hybridge Hills in a positive manner is great, and that's exactly what people are doing. So that was essentially the meeting. We spent an enormous amount of time on that. That was a great metric that was very positive. It's always nice to be reassured and reaffirmed that this is a good thing moving forward. So we're moving in very exciting times with the golf course and I can't wait to get into that. It's gonna be great.
Councilman Barry.
Historical committee is thrilled to be able to announce that the Cultural and Heritage Commission and Parks and Open Space Advisory Committee has just made the announcement and awarded eighty-one thousand, two hundred twenty-six dollars and forty-one cents to Solitude House for the restoration of the second story back porch. We would like to thank the Hutterton County Cultural Heritage Commission and all of our volunteers, event attendees, donors, and the support we have received from the Borough, other historical groups and visitors we have welcomed locally and from out of state. This is now the second grant that the Borough has received for restorations at Solitude House, and we are so grateful to have the support of the county. The Historical Committee also wrote a grant for the architectural fees for the completion of the back porch. That grant was also awarded for six thousand five hundred dollars. Thank you to the state of New Jersey for their support in our efforts to continue the restoration. After several months of work attempting to obtain bids, the committee is still working to obtain proposals for the reconstruction of the Solitude House West Side porch. We are working with state and the county to move forward with this project. We are very grateful for the support of Hutterton County Cultural and Heritage Commission, the State Historic Preservation Office in the Borough, and we look forward to being able to award the project soon. The Solitude House and grounds continue to be available for rent to host murder mystery parties to aid in our fundraising for continued maintenance and renovations of the Solitude House. We're pleased to join forces with local restaurants, Juniper Hill Circa, Hilltop Deli for catering. And we're pleased to announce that the parties are booking up quickly. So we are currently available to accept one more mystery party reservation before the end of the year. If you're interested in hosting a mystery party, please visit our Facebook page, Hybridge History, or email us at history@hybridge.org for information on booking. The Solitude House first and second floor and exterior grounds are also available for private event rentals. With over five thousand eight hundred square feet of indoor space, the house and grounds provide a beautiful location to host any type of event. If you'd like to host a private party at Solitude property, please email history@hybridge.org for further details. Bookings are already being scheduled for spring of 2023, so request your date early. Events are booked on first term, first serve basis. So if you're thinking about also a holiday gathering and cookie exchanges, that might be something you might want to consider for this winter. Again, remember that we're all operating on volunteer basis, so we have only a limited amount of bookings we are able to book. On Saturday, it's the 12th of November, local historian Dave Gessling will lead a free walking tour and a talk on the railroad history of Hybridge. Lasting approximately one and a half hours, this walk will highlight the place of the railroad and growth and everyday life of Hybridge from the nineteenth through the twentieth centuries. We'll visit locations of former Central Railroad of New Jersey and Taylor-Worten Plant Railroad. The walk will start at 11:00 AM at the Hybridge Transit Station, proceeding down Main Street to the Commons and a bit down at the Columbia Trail. And we'll have information up on our Hybridge History page for you and how you can register for this event. Our next Solitude Open House will take place on November 13th from two to five. And please come and enjoy music on the porch with Rich Gelson and a tour of the first and second floors of Solitude. The committee also had hosted several Tisco open markets this year and we're grateful for the vendors who came out to sell at the market and to the shoppers who came in support. Due to scheduling of our events, we will not be hosting a Tisco market in November. The next market will take place at Solitude House on Sunday, December 4th. This will be our winter market with a vendor setup in each room at Solitude House. And we currently have space for five more vendors, so if you're interested, please contact us immediately. It's twenty-five dollars a space and the market opens at 10:00 AM. All proceeds will go to the renovations of Solitude House. And in addition to the winter market at Solitude occurring at the same time, we are also having the National Museum of Industrial History that will be setting up. And they've developed a holiday themed mold for ornament making and blacksmith. Billy Barrett conducting demonstrations on the property. Demonstrations begin on the property at 12:00 PM and we're looking for this exciting, we're looking forward to this exciting event. On sale now is the 2023 Dog's at Solitude calendar. The calendar displays photos taken by volunteer photographer Dinette Pascarella of local dogs in the newly renovated Solitude House first floor and on the property. Pre-sale of this calendar has begun and you can find that information as well on our Facebook page. Last month, we joined forces with Lebanon Township Museum in their second annual Path to Preservation. Solitude House was open from 10:00 to 4:00 for the self-guided tour. This event was so popular that committee members continued welcoming guests from all over New Jersey until 6:30 PM. And we look forward to participating again next year. The Historical Committee members attended graveyard tours in Clinton Presbyterian Churchyard and Mount Lebanon Cemetery. And this, these events opened doors to collaboration with both Clinton and Lebanon Historical Committees. And we look forward to working together on future events and discussing our shared history. Also, the committee hosted its first annual Halloween Ball on October 22nd. The theme was the Addams Family versus the Munsters. And fifty-dollar gift cards were donated from Juniper Hill and Circa. Live music was performed by Ruby West and Tarot by Wolfie. It was a really great event. And we hope to have it again next year and hope to see everyone at the event. And also, we thank all of those who have been at Solitude assist with the restoration and remodeling projects. Anyone interested in volunteering, please contact us at history@hybridge.org. And one other, one other note I'd like to make, not a part of the Historical Committee, but the candy collection that Councilman Chris and I have worked on. We'd like to thank everybody who donated candy for neighbors in need of extra candies for crooked eaters. So thanks, everyone, and that's it.
Councilman Schwartz.
Yes, I have very little to report tonight. Hybridge Board of Education had a working session meeting on October 3rd and a regular session meeting on October 11th. And I have nothing of significance to report back to council. It is my understanding that there's been a meeting scheduled for November 9th to discuss the future potential snowplowing and other shared services between the Borough and the school district. As liaison to the BOE, I am planning to be at the meeting. Bonnie, if you could please include me on the invitation. Thank you. That's the end of my report.
Councilman Sylvester.
Okay, I'm gonna start off with some bad news. Unfortunately, we will not be able to pave Nassau Road this year due to budget limitations. Understand that we, we know how important Nassau Road is, the activities, the environmental, flow trails. That road needs to be paved and Bonnie and I were talking about, and obviously it's Bonnie's decision, but we're gonna make sure that gets in on the budget next year to get that paved. Sorry for the inconvenience. All right, on to some good news. We're scheduled to pave Thomas Taylor, new Prospect and Church Street extensions. Right now, we are slotted in for the Teachers Convention Week. They're planning on working Wednesday, the 16th, 17th, 18th, and finishing on Saturday, the 19th with the paving. So if weather holds out for us, hopefully that will be completed on that weekend. Is it the week before? Even better news. They moved it up a week, so hopefully weather holds out and we can get this done sooner than later. And I feel it's still a Saturday.
That was the plan.
Yeah, there's still a Saturday date in there, so. We'll send out a PSA to keep everyone informed on those dates as they approach. All right, on our monthly Public Works Report, the roof was replaced at the, on the shed at the Bunville Water Plant. A new footing was installed on Dewey Avenue for the speed sign. Mr. Dennis, the pad on Dewey Avenue is completed for the Future Recycling Center. The flagpole at Husky Field was sanded, painted, and will be reinstalled tomorrow with new flags. An oak tree was planted at the middle school for the Environmental Committee. All dead trees have been removed from Union Forge Park. We are waiting for an estimate for stump removal or grinding. The potholes at Union Forge Park have been addressed. The lawn at Shop E was mowed and new no trespassing signs were installed on Shop E. We had unwelcome visitors in the building. Thermostat was repaired at the DPW Garage. New log sheets were implemented for leaf and brush collection. We will have accurate records for DEP tonnage reports moving forward. Also, inspection forms were recreated for the catch basin inspections that are required by DEP. The goal is to have all inspections completed by January. Our John Deere tractor has been fixed and returned to service. Thankfully, it was still under warranty. Truck four, which is a dump truck, is out now getting plow and piston repaired. It should be back in service next week and ready for plow for the winter season. Leaf bags and garbage have been picked up around the Borough on schedule. Brush and leaf pickup has started. Couple of notes. Mine Road has been added to Zone Four for leaf pickup. Leaf bags are available at the DPW yard. Please call ahead. Concerning brush, brush shall be no more than three inches in diameter untied. Brush should be placed at curbside without interfering with passage of stormwater drainage facing the roadway. These must be placed at the curb on residence property, not on the roadway. Okay, and also Brandon is working on his 2023 budget. Water and sewer, this month, all markouts, markout requests were completed. Two curb boxes were dug out and replaced. Thirteen new meter, water meters were installed. The new water main on West Main has been completed. Public Works will be installing four new pit meters within the next week for the four services on the new water main. A new metal door will be replaced at Well Eight. The upgrades to Well Eight will start on October 31st. No interruptions are expected. All water meter readings have been completed for this quarter. And if you have any questions, please call Borough Hall or Brian Brandon's email address on the website. Thank you.
Councilman Strange.
Okay, well, I'll start with the last few things on the calendar for the Events Committee. This weekend, starting tomorrow, I guess, we have the movie in the Commons and pumpkin decorating for Hallow Weekend. Saturday is the Halloween party, I guess, during the day and then at the Commons after the parade. And then the thirtieth, I'm sorry, is the Halloween Parade held at the Squad Building from 12:00 PM to 4:30. We just approved tonight rain dates for those, those rain dates being, well, let's see. Thirty, the 29th, the rain date is the 30th after the parade. For the 28th, the rain date is the 29th, and for the 30th, I guess there isn't rain. Just do it inside. We also have the Pooch Parade, which we had approved a rain date for November 5th, and so that's upcoming. And Paint Out is upcoming as well on November 6th. I was, with the, with school and everything, I was very sad to realize I had missed, I missed the registration for Paint Out, so I will not be producing artwork for the first time in four years, I guess. It's a little frustrating, but I'm sure that they will have more than enough, even better artists there, especially with the youth division. So that's fine. There'll be, there'll be better people there to look at. And maybe I'll go buy something this time. Let's see. And then, of course, the recreation, I mean, the Events Committee will be looking ahead to next year and beginning to put together the calendar of stuff for next year as well. The Rec Committee has not met, well, we're about to meet. The Rec Committee is about to meet early November. Our meetings are early month. So the main things right now are, the Rec Committee is working, representatives of the Rec Committee are working with Jorba and Avid and the town, gathering money and coming up with a plan to deal with some trees that are perceived as dangerous, dead ash trees around the flow trails. Some concerns about, you know, branches falling and landing on people and such. And so the town and the volunteers are working together to get those settled. For the moment, those trails are closed while trying to figure out which things are most in need of being removed safely. Same is true around the pump track and dog park. Trees are going to be removed. I believe it's on the 7th and 8th, I think, is the dates. And so that's already set up, though, and the dog, both the pump track and the dog park, kind of peripheral trees. We don't want falling on dogs and bikes. And so those will be getting dealt with fairly soon. The Rec Committee is also at this point looking ahead, once again, to next year and activities for next year. The things that have been tossed around, of course, are continuing, some of the events that have been done, the Hybridge Adventure Race, but also bringing in new things, maybe things that have been gone for a while. Maybe some sort of new bicycle race, like the Tour de Hybridge used to be, but not quite the same. So some other ideas have been tossed around, looking ahead to the upcoming year. One thing I wanted to say, for the Hallow Weekend, there are still volunteer opportunities available as there many times are when something's being put on on a volunteer basis. So I believe there's a sign-up genius. I would imagine there's a link on the womenforhybridge.org website that would get you to that, to that, if you wanted to go sign up to help out. So there's a variety of events going on and if you're willing to help out, you know, they'd be happy to have you. Let's see. So that's Events and Rec. Yeah, I think that covers those things. And then we've got the Fire Department. So the most recent stuff I have is for the complete month of September. Thirty-two incidents in September, one firematic drill and two work details. Six volunteers staffed the station on September 17th from 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM for North Hunter Mutual Aid Group. And the staff hours for the month of September were four hundred and eighty-two man-hours. They hosted their 22nd annual golf outing, most successful year to date. And they wanted to thank everybody for continuing to support them. In terms of EMS, for the, I guess it'd be the same thing for September, full month of September. They had three hundred and seventy-one service calls. The total calls for this year so far, three thousand four hundred and eighty-seven. Twenty-two of those calls were in Hybridge Borough specifically, and the response time to Hybridge was 6.5 minutes from dispatch to on scene. We all, they wanted to thank once again as well, the residents that supported the coin toss. And that, I forget what day that was on, but that was a few weeks, about a month ago, I guess. And they have also started their 2022, I think that's.
Twenty-three.
Yeah, I think that's a typo. What was I was sent? The 2023, probably 2022 Fund Drive for 2023, which is just starting this month. So it's their fund drive for the upcoming year. In terms of police, I have some of the numbers here. Throughout September, three motor vehicle crashes, one assault. Hundred and fifty-seven motor vehicles stops, which is probably why there are fewer crashes, because they stop people before they crash. A total of a thousand and ninety-four calls in our little town throughout the month of September. Adult arrests and juvenile arrests, zero thankfully. In terms of training, they've had autism shield training and domestic violence training for seven and six officers and third quarter resiliency one officer. Just ongoing continuing training. And three specific community policing projects that Chief mentioned. The Blue Envelope Program once again was mentioned and Brian Shipp's is kind of the point person for that. The Children Intellectual and Developmental Disability Identification Card Program. Officer Gutsick is spearheading that. And then the Business District Quality of Life Program is Officer Steve Dean and Matthew Lasure. And I know that we mentioned the Blue Envelope Program briefly last time. It was also interesting to see that October 21st, an Assemblyman, De Mayo, is putting together a bill to expand this program, which we're currently participating, to be a statewide thing. And had a picture taken with our police chief and Chief Barlow, I know from Dukesbury because I've played basketball against him and I see him in my school. The two of them were the people chosen to have their picture taken because they've spearheaded this at the local level, which is, once again, I think it's a good example of how we have a pretty proactive police chief and really pushing for a good program. So if, and if you don't know what it is, you know, look it up, as I said before. It provides officers with information they need if they are approaching an individual who is on the autistic spectrum so that they know a way to alter their behavior a little bit so that it doesn't escalate things that don't need to be escalated. Let's put it that way. To interact in a way that's appropriate for that individual. Differentiate, if you will, to use a teaching term, according to the person receiving the service. So there you go. That is, that is all of my stuff for the moment.
Hi, Board of Health, just a reminder that there's no rabies clinic in November in Hybridge, but you can go to nearby towns. There's been some PSAs and it should be on our website, too. We just didn't have enough people coming out the last few years to warrant setting it up ourselves. The Environmental Commission, our quarterly cleanup, we go out every quarter and we find a spot in Hybridge and clean. And this past weekend, we went to the parking lot at McDonald Street and cleaned up, pulled all the weeds, picked up all the trash and just boosted up a little bit. The Green Team Commons Connector Path Project, I asked Adam if he could just show off a little bit, a little show and tell. We were so excited. We had the Sustainable Jersey Grant that we got was for twelve thousand, six hundred and some dollars. And we had a really hard time finding someone that would do this for us and come in with the amount of money that we had. But we did get Golden Wolf Landscape Design to finally come through and they just finished their part of it. And there's some preferable and improbable services in that so that the water shall drain down some and not just come right down like a waterfall. We had hoped when we originally did the grant that we could do all this landscaping and lighting, but with the cost going up for everything, we have no money left. So we got the walkway and now we're going to look to set up some donation areas so that people can donate money and we can choose the natural wildlife type of plants and things that we want to put in there. Maybe a demonstration rain garden and getting some lighting. So we'd like to. So we'd like to continue with what our hopes were for that and apply for other grants to maybe help us along the way, but we used up everything that we had just to get the hardscape done. And thanks to DPW for helping us out over there, especially they cleaned up the railroad tracks because our idea is to have the railroad tracks that are history, Natalie, you'll love that, history, coming in to shove it off, and you can walk through that and then get to our connector to take you down into Main Street. So we are, it's still a work in progress, but we're excited that this much has happened. It's been a long time coming, over five years that we've been trying to make this happen. So thank you for everybody who worked hard on that. And Colleen, you're here, especially thank you to you. You put in many, many, many hours just following up on things for us to make it happen. What else, anything I missed? The Environmental Commission donated the red oak tree that DPW planted for us because so many trees were cut down at the elementary school. You pull into the driveway and you just see a bunch of cut-down trees. So we thought we need to put something, and a red oak tree is the state tree, so, and it's a hardy tree, and that would be at least something there other than the stumps that were there. And I did want to check on the Girl Scout benches. I didn't get a chance to, I think Bonnie, I copied you on that, because I read in the newspaper where the Girl Scouts donated benches from Clinton to Clinton Township went missing. And I'm not sure if we have both of ours still there, that Julian Honeycutt had donated this summer.
It was up there on Monday, I thought I saw them.
Two of them, two of them. I'd just like somebody to double-check on that, because since I saw that in a local town, and I'm like, last time I was there, I remember seeing one, but I'm not sure I saw two. So just like to know if they still exist. And it's the recycling container, that's a great project, and I look forward to discussing it more and making it happen for our residents. That's it.
So we did meet with South Street, South State, the paper for the co-op that was going to do the area around the schools and Nassau Road for us. And when we did get the pricing in from them, due to the increased cost of everything, it was slightly higher than we had anticipated for the Nassau from what we had appropriated. At this point, it's too late in the year to appropriate more money, and the timing is off, too, to get it done. But hopefully, it may be that the prices come down come spring, that we might be able to still do it within the amount we had appropriated without having to add more to it, so silver lining, maybe. We did find out this week that St. Ubers is no longer going to be providing animal control services for us next year. It turns out that it's too costly for them, so we are trying to gather some quotes for some other services to be provided. Going to be working on updating our vacant and abandoned property ordinance to make that more up-to-date and usable. The gas lines should be completed with their main lines in the Jenny Jump area over the next one or two weeks, and then we'll be getting bids out for the water lines, because that'll be next, to get the water line done before we can do the paving up there. And we do have the Choice for Tots box out at Earl Hall now, so bring in your donations.
I just have a couple of things. I attended the 7822 Coalition of Mayors meeting a few weeks ago, and we talked about some initiatives that they're doing on the county level, which, one of which is establishing home-based business ordinances for each municipality. Not as a means of, you know, big brothering, but more as a means of tying into the county's economic development plans and promoting these home-based businesses. The trends show that more people are moving out this way. We have very little real estate inventory, so we want people to know that this is a home-based, business-friendly town. So I'll be, the EDC will be working on that soon to come up with an ordinance for Hybridge. Goals for next year within the 7822 Coalition is to reinvigorate the Trains Initiative, because we started on that, we got COVID, trains are even less frequent here in Hybridge, but we have enough of a population, enough people that are commuting. The buses seem to be running less and less because 78 is awful. So the trains might be a better way to kind of push that, and hopefully, if we have this whole coalition now, we can tie into the Raritan Valley Line, Mayor's Alliance, I can't remember all these names, and really make some change next year. I also attended the Hunterdon County Economic Development Awards Breakfast, where they showcased the Explore Hunterdon website, which is really kind of neat. I hadn't, I'm sorry, but I didn't know about this website until at this meeting. ExploreHunterdonNJ.com, they're marketing us as the Other Side of Jersey, which is really cool. But I did notice some gaps where Hybridge needs to be, including Solitude House. We need to get some of our own, you know, places to visit right here in Hybridge on their website, so another project for EDC. The golf app was part of that metrics, and I think that we're gonna be working with the EDC and HBVA to get more business attention on that golf app. So once they're done playing golf, they can come on down to Main Street with hopefully some sort of discount or whatever. I want to give a special thanks to Officer Gutsick. First of all, I want to say, in my whole life, I've never heard of this happening, but Chief Bartman, Bonnie and I got an email from a visitor that was pulled over and received a ticket from Officer Gutsick, and he was thanking us for how excellent he was treated. He got a ticket, but she treated him very well and respectful, and it was really just, it was kind, we were laughing about it. It was pretty funny. But anyway, Officer Gutsick brought my attention to the Hunterdon County Stigma-Free Zone Task Force, and an event they were doing called the Harvesting Hope Festival, which was to bring attention to reducing the stigma against mental illness and addiction. And they were doing this festival and asking for scarecrows. And the creative team built this amazing scarecrow. It was posted online, I think a lot of people saw it, a goddess scarecrow. And our own Mark Weatherby here wrote a beautiful poem to go with it. They got special recognition. I planned to read this poem tonight, but there's no way I'm gonna get through it. So I would like every, well, I think it's on the website. If it's not, it's definitely on my Facebook page, but it may still even be on Main Street. If you get the chance, walk by, it's really cool. And that's it.
I'm going to give my update on the GRC appeal, and I'll leave it there.
Okay, thanks. Bill list, Adam.
Onto the second round of public comments.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Motion to approve the bill list?
Motion to approve the bill list.
Second?
Roll call.
Graham?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Strange?
Yes.
And Fair?
Yes.
Now, public comments, guys.
I love Hybridge, I love Hunterdon County. As far as I'm concerned, I live in paradise. I'm from Brooklyn, so I know what paradise is. Over the years, whether it's Mayor Schweikert, Mayor Desiree, Mayor Lee, I have always been very respectful in my comments, and the reason is very simply, there's no way I would ever want to be behind that desk for what you people have to put up with and whatever, if any, that you get paid. Always been very, very respectful. Whatever I say is for the betterment of Hybridge. If that emotion is misconstrued as disrespect, that's not my problem. I have listened to this individual make her comments over the years, and 98% of the time, I've disagreed or been bored with whatever she said. Never once did I voice any kind of criticism. If she thinks this is some children's playbox, fine, it's an adult council meeting. You have emotions, and that's all I, and that's all I did was express my emotion because I want Hybridge to be better. I am Hybridge's biggest fan, and you people all deserve my respect. Thank you.
Hi, Derek, Sally, word, Solitude. And, you know, I don't think this is a toy box, it's okay, everything's good. But anyway, I want to say that we have a lot of artists in our town here, and through the years, I've learned more and more people, different arts, whether they be poetry, I mean, I did not know that Mark wrote, and what a beautiful poem. And I was in tears when I read that, just, I was, and I couldn't get through it either in public. But one thing I found out is we have another artist, and that's right over there, Chris Graham. During the pandemic, all my artistry stuff just closed down. I shut down totally. He wrote a book, he wrote a book, that guy right there. And I'm just so proud of that, so, anyway. I just want to say to all the people who are artists in whatever way, just keep your hearts wide open, keep writing, keep doing your music. And Hybridge is awesome to be able to, you know, keep such space so that that kind of ability can flourish. So we're awesome.
Chris, where can people buy your book? You gave me that, where can people buy your book?
Oh, actually, they can buy it online.
There you go, online.
And I'm working on it, I'm working on D-Plays.
You were expecting children.
Hi, y'all. So anyway, Colleen Conroy, two men in court. I just wanted to say, I want to thank DPW, the amazing job that they did. And Bonnie, we met on, was it Monday? It was just Monday, we talked about what they can do to help with the project at the Commons, and they came out, and today, I know you had some pictures up, but they did an amazing job. And so we just wanted to say thank you, because it was a long-time project, and it did take some doing, and we do have a little bit of money left, Lynn, though, a little bit for some signage. But I sent today about ribbon cutting, I think that that's a key part of it. The other thing I just want to say quickly is, so the middle school, I think there's one on Main Street now, too, for candy wrappers. We, at both schools, try to keep the trash out of the landfills. We're collecting candy wrappers after Halloween. We're collecting aluminum cans, I'm sorry, no beer cans, because we're a middle school. We don't want to encourage anything, but we're collecting aluminum cans if you want to help us out for habitat, for humanity. And we're also collecting cereal boxes.
And eat cartridges at the elementary school.
Eat cartridges, but cereal boxes for our food pantries, because we're doing a big Domino cereal box challenge. So if anybody wants to donate, thank you very much.
Okay, uh, what you doing there?
If you want, go ahead, if you want, get up, get up.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, you want to go ahead?
Sure.
Hello, I don't, I live in.
Name, name and address.
Oh, I'm from, from Rogers, I live in Aitwater Way. And I don't really have that much to say. Outside of, I, well, I think that, to be honest, I think you guys have been doing a relatively good job, to be honest. I've been, I'm an activist, and I've seen a lot of the states. There is, from people, from, I've seen a lot of states, and I must say, this town is, and relatively good compared to it, so, yeah. I guess, keep doing what you're doing.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Second?
Roll call.
Graham?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Strange?
Yes.
And Fair?
Yes.
Next council meeting, November 10th, 7:30, right here at the Firehouse.